All right, and it is 6:30. So is there a motion to open the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I'm having an issue. Who motioned in second?
Jordana and me. I think it was Jordana, right?
Yes. I mean, a bunch of people said at the same time, but that sounds good.
Works.
Okay, thank you.
All, everyone was in favor, Mary, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Okay, we will move to public input number one now would be the time if any members of the public had a question for the Board of Education, you can raise your hand and Mr. Fisher would unmute you or put your question into the chat box. We'll read your question, we can direct it. I know I saw a message from the chat before. So it looks like there was a person who put a question in regarding a COVID question. Now would be the time to ask that, either raise your hand and we would unmute you or put that into the chat box.
We have one person.
Okay. Unmute that person, and if you could just please give us your name only, and then you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Sure. My name is Megan Schmidt. I'm the parent of a freshman at Pearson. And I have, obviously, the COVID numbers, Omicron, have been going way up, and I'm wondering what the district is prepared to do in the event that the numbers go past whatever kind of threshold the district sees appropriate to keep school open.
Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Nichols?
Brian, do you want me to address this question in isolation? Because I'm going to cover in a pretty broad, with a broad perspective, the current status of COVID-19 in our district regionally, nationally, globally, and then talk about considerations related to future paths forward. So for me to get into an answer right now might take an awfully long time when I'm when I'm scheduled to speak about it. So I'm wondering if I should do my work and then we could have public input?
I missed that last part, Jeff.
I'm wondering if I should, we should do the superintendent's report, which will include a lot of information about COVID.
I'm okay with that. Yeah, if the board's okay with that, we can, we can move right to that and open it up to questions. If a lot of people are joining, and I see that Megan agrees. So why don't we do that, Jeff? Why don't we move to the superintendent's report? You can give us your report, and then we'll open it up to the public and the board for questions.
Great.
Great.
So as Megan noted, the cases are increasing exponentially in the United States, regionally and even locally. As of this evening, 12/20, the 12/19 data that was put on the dashboard had an 11.9% test positive rate in Suffolk County and a 10.1% seven-day average. I can recall at one time, we were at that level at the worst of the pandemic in terms of test positive numbers. So we're at a very high level. Just prior to the meeting, the CDC came out and noted this evening that 73% of the new infections in the United States from December 12th to December 18th were due to Omicron. So only a week ago, we were hearing numbers like 3% and 4%. So again, the 12/30, 18th, 73% of the cases were Omicron, which means that it's, it's the dominant strain, and we know that it transmits much more efficiently than previous forms of the virus. New York State has had four consecutive days of record test positives, with today being 23,391 test positives in the state, which is the highest on record for New York State. Globally, if you've been following the news, Omicron is, as we already said throughout the world, different countries are taking different approaches to the virus, with Australia have a pretty lax approach, and other countries considering various forms of more restrictive measures like lockdowns. I think the country that's most pertinent, at least from, from my perspective, we seem to have followed them maybe three or four weeks behind, has been Great Britain. And I'm just going to throw out some statistics out there, statistics to give you a sense of the extent to which the experts really don't know how this is going to play out. So in Great Britain, their Scientific Advisory for Emergencies, which is basically something akin to the CDC, is saying that by month's end, the range for cases per day will range from 600,000 to 2 million per day in Great Britain, based on their models. That hospitalizations could range from 3,000 a day to 10,000 a day, and deaths could range from 600 to 6,000 a day. And the reason I point those statistics out is not to scare anyone, it's to point to the fact that the scientists who are studying this really don't know how it's going to play out specifically with regard to hospitalizations and resulting deaths. And again, Great Britain is three or four weeks ahead of us. The USA, at the peak of the, of the COVID-19 pandemic, we hit 250,000 cases, and there are multiple models saying that Omicron will result in north of 1 million cases a day within the next couple of weeks. So that's sort of a current status report on what Megan referred to as the escalating cases with a, with a view statewide, nationally, and globally. With regard to recent developments, let me review what the current quarantine guidance is, and this is important to understand. Fully vaccinated people are not required to quarantine. It's recommended that if they're exposed to the virus, and recommended is a key word there, it's not required. It's recommended that they test three to five days after their exposure to an infected person. That's the New York State and the Suffolk County guidance. The CDC says five to seven days, but we go with the local, which is three to five days. Just as importantly, close contacts who are unvaccinated, so in other words, you can be classified as a close contact if you're unvaccinated, they're required to quarantine for a minimum of 10 days after the last exposure to an infected person. So what that means is that the 70-some-odd percent of the people in our school community who are vaccinated are not going to be required currently, or in the future, at least at this point, to quarantine. That's important as it relates to some later comments about vaccine efficacy. And remember, the close contact definition, and really it only applies at this point to unvaccinated people, is within six feet of an infected person for a cumulative total of 15 minutes over a 24-hour period. The Suffolk County Department of Health has some qualifiers with regard to that, so they consider high-risk sports like wrestling or basketball. They're much more restrictive with regard to that, to that 15-minute rule over 24 hours. Recent changes with regard to how testing can impact quarantine periods. So on the 3rd of December this year, the New York State Department of Health released revised guidance, and that guidance started with something called Test to Stay, the acronym TTS. The New York State Department of Health in that memorandum said that they do not recommend TTS for unvaccinated close contacts. So the, the concept was basically that if you were unvaccinated and you were a close contact, that there are models out there that allow you to test out of the quarantine. The New York State Department of Health did not recommend it. However, what the New York State Department of Health in their December 3rd guidance did say is that it would be up to local health departments to adopt it if they chose to. And the New York State Department of Health did not prohibit local health departments from doing so. Shortly thereafter, the Suffolk County Department of Health said that they did not endorse Test to Stay. So at this point, unvaccinated persons continue to have to quarantine for a minimum of 10 days. The second significant development emanating out of that December 3rd guidance was that persons who exhibit COVID symptoms with no known exposure to an infected person may participate in school activities following receipt of a negative rapid test or PCR test. And we sent notification out today to the community, making them aware of that development. It previously was that you could, if you had no known contact with an infected person, but you had developed symptoms, maybe you had a runny nose, maybe you had a sore throat, you could test out of the quarantine and return to school with a PCR test. The change is now we accept a rapid antigen test as well. And again, notification went out to parents earlier today. So I've gone over the, the current status, some of the recent pertinent changes. In the last section, which sort of gets to Megan's question, is what are we going to do moving forward? What's the lens that the school district is going to apply? And I'll make a couple of points. Number one, as has been the case throughout, the priorities are protecting the health and safety of those under our charge. That's the faculty and staff and the students and to, and to, I guess you would include the entire school community in that. We know that having kids in school is important. That's another consideration. We know when we talk about health and safety, part of the health issue is it's not good to not have students physically in school. So we're trying to balance their health and their wellness with COVID and the impact that's going to have potentially on, on people's physical health. Vaccine effectiveness against Omicron has changed. So at the beginning, before Omicron, RNA vaccines, and that's what I'll talk about tonight, which are Pfizer and Moderna, they basically had a north of 90% protective factor against infection. But we found over time, and a lot of it came out of Israel, but what we found over time is that after about three to four months, those numbers started to plummet, which then brought about the need for booster shots. However, with Omicron, the, the protective factor for infection dropped from north of 90%. And even if you account that after four to six months, it dropped to 70% without a booster, it's now dropped with Omicron to between 30 and 40%. So if you've had two shots of an RNA vaccine, you're basically protected, or you have a protective factor of 30 to 40%. And the protection against severe disease dropped from north of 90% to about 70%. Now, you've seen, you've heard a lot of talk about boosters, and the boosters for Moderna and Pfizer raised that protective factor for, for not contracting the disease to about 70%. So it goes from 30 to 40% to about 70%. And the, the prevention of severe disease goes from about 70% to north of 90%. So we know that, that vaccines are very important, and boosters are very important. And I believe it'll be, it'll happen quite quickly that fully vaccinated gets redefined as three shots. So right now, you're considered fully vaccinated with two shots. With the data I just talked about, the CDC is likely, within the next week or two, would be my guess, they will redefine fully vaccinated as having three shots. So what does all that mean for the students of Sag Harbor? Well, we know that infections are increasing. We know, based on conversations with the local hospital, Southampton Hospital that I've had, and looking at data from New Jersey, New York, which seems to be the epicenter of Omicron, and even looking at the studies coming out of South Africa, that, and I, and I don't want to say this categorically because it's somewhat anecdotal to the extent that it hasn't been peer reviewed yet, but the, the data thus far suggests that the incidence of severe disease is less than in previous strains. So the question becomes, how, what data do we look at as a school district in making a decision to stay in person or go remote? I think obviously you look at the test positive data, but I also think you need to look at the hospitalization data. And again, when I talked to Southampton Hospital earlier today, obviously, they're concerned about what the future holds, but the current hospitalization rates are pretty low. It's important to know that there is a lag time between infection and hospitalization. So I think we'll know a lot more about where we stand roughly a week or two from now. Because theoretically, if there's a two-week lag from infection to hospitalization, the hospitalization numbers that we see regionally and locally will be more pertinent or relevant towards the end of December. So my recommendation at this point as the superintendent is to continue to monitor local conditions on the ground, have an extra focused eye on hospitalization. And if our hospitalization numbers continue to be low, which would suggest that this, this variant or this mutation doesn't result in severe disease, then I think the approach is different than the approach we took, you know, a year and a half ago. Conversely, if we see the hospitalization rates begin to spike, which it, which has not been the case elsewhere, although you're starting to see a little bit of it in Great Britain, specifically in London, if the hospitalization rates go up, then I think, you know, all choices are on the table, including remote status. So that's the summary. I, I realize that it's not, quote, "a concrete answer" to the extent that I'm not saying if the test positive rate comes to 14%, we're going remote. If it stays below 14%, we're staying in person, because I don't think that's really a thoughtful, prudent way to approach this. Happy to answer any questions.
Jeff, I'm going to ask Megan if she has any questions, but just before to tag on to your update, thank you. Can you just go into the notification process and how we notify and what procedures we're using to notify if there's a positive test? And if anything has changed since last year, or how we're doing it now, just specifically to address emails potentially the board has received and the administration has received over the past week or so?
Sure. So I, I had sort of reviewed this at the last board meeting, but it's wild to touch upon it again, which is the Family Educational, Family Educational Privacy Rights Act or FERPA, which, which applies to schools. Some people are under the impression that HIPAA is what applies to students, but it's actually FERPA. And one of the things that school districts have to remain cognizant of is obviously protecting the people who are under our supervision, and we have to balance that with the privacy rights of students. So basically, what FERPA says with regard to COVID is that if in the emails we send out, if we were to be so specific that a reasonable person could arrive at who was infected with COVID, then we would be in violation of FERPA. So some people, parents, and I understand why, have called for the school district to be more specific with the notifications. Instead of putting out the notifications by school, they would like it by grade level or by class. And the guidance that we've received from council, which is consistent with the guidance that I've read from the, the federal government, is that we have to remain cognizant of not sending out a notification that's so specific that would, it would allow a reasonable person to determine who was infected. And so what we're doing now is no different than what we've done in the past. Having said that, we do consult with the Department of Health on a regular basis regarding all cases. So if, in the opinion of the Department of Health, they determine that a specific situation requires an increased level of notification for safety or health reasons, then we will take that guidance under consideration and act accordingly. So we've had situations where to notify people about a positive test in the class. But generally, that would not be the appropriate level of notification, given the advice of council and if you read FERPA, the legislation. Now, some districts who have large numbers of students, they can navigate around this because the confidentiality related to the cohort size is not as much of an issue. But in a small school like ours, it is. And I think one more important point to remember is that in interpreting the guidance, one of the key considerations is our judgment as to whether or not the notification practices that we're employing are sufficiently addressing the risk. And to date, we have not had spread within the school. Debatable that there was one incident where a couple of teachers may have caught it from one another, but spread between students in school has been minimal. And as per the Department of Health and FERPA, it would suggest that our level of notification is appropriate and not putting anybody at risk. And obviously, if conditions change and it's determined that our notification has to be adjusted to protect the welfare and the safety of our students, FERPA allows you to do that, but we're not there yet.
Thank you, Jeff. And before I add, go over to the board for questions. Scott, if you could unmute Megan, who was in before, allow her to answer, ask her question now that we table that, the first public input.
Yeah, Megan, you can go ahead and speak.
Okay, great. Thanks. And Jeff, thanks for your answer. And I really understand the HIPAA and the privacy issues. My question is, we go with bonds to the board and to the school district and to our community for things like, you know, repairs and fields and things with the park. But I want to understand why we're not committing more funds to things like testing in our community when that's such an important part of containing COVID, like they do at colleges, like Cornell. Like I had this conversation this morning with someone, like they, the 900-plus students at Cornell who tested positive clearly weren't, you know, showing symptoms. But that's how they identified them, and that's how they're controlling it in that school. And I'm just wondering if that's a possibility for our district. Thank you.
That's a good question, Megan. And we were just talking about that today, the notion of bringing in Enzo Labs again after the break to possibly run PCR testing like we did last year a few times. It is, it can be, it can be costly. Thankfully, Enzo does it in a, in a manner that's not costly to the district. And as long as we meet their minimum requirement, which is about 150%, which hopefully we can, we're, we're going to do that more regularly, especially during the next month. Might, you know, you might see bi-weekly testing or something like that. With regard to more testing than that, I haven't really looked into that yet. I've talked to my peers in other districts, and I don't know if we have the resources to do that in terms of access to the tests. I know the president is scheduled to speak tomorrow night, and a primary focus of his presentation is increasing availability of tests. And so hopefully, we'll know more then. But again, the, the real answer to your question is look for some increased testing right after break.
Hey, Jeff, just to add to that, can you talk a little bit about, I think people sometimes get confused about, you know, private schools can require testing, whereas we are able to make it available. But I believe it has to be voluntary unless the state says otherwise.
Correct. And that's important to, to point out that we don't, we can't make testing mandatory, or can we make vaccine uptake mandatory? So I have three children in college, and all of them are tested on a regular basis to varying degrees as a, as a, as a condition of attendance. And what you'll notice, you know, you referenced Cornell, and we saw it at Princeton and NYU, and, and since then, a whole host of other schools have, have made changes, but they're moving to now make the booster mandatory to return in the spring, which is consistent with what I think the CDC is going to do with regard to making, changing the fully vaccinated definition to three shots.
Are there any other board questions for Jeff before I go back to the public?
I have one that's a pseudo-question, which is, in terms of testing, it is an issue. I had a family member in the community who recently, who today went to go have a test done. You can't get an appointment anywhere east of the canal. And so they waited outside online for an hour and a half. And, and there's just a lack of tests, there's also a lack of boosters, because I have, you know, a family member who needed a booster, and it was over a month to get an appointment. It's in Stony Brook Southampton Hospital, and so they have to go up island to get it, which they're going to do. But it just, I, I, you know, I don't know if there's a way, if it's even appropriate, but you know, do we advocate with the, with the, you know, government officials in Suffolk County and in Southampton to say we need better resources locally because not everybody can take the time to go travel? And, you know, particularly considering that, at the Times, I think I had an article yesterday about that they, you know, some research shows that most cases are going to be breakthrough cases in the not-so-distant future, that we have to have better access to testing and also to boosters. And we're just, we're a community struggling with that. I mean, the, the local pharmacy said they're selling out 500 take-home tests within an hour every day. And not all those take-home tests are necessarily resulting in accurate results. But, but anyway, so I think, I think those are two issues that are going to increase in terms of our ability to be able to have a healthy community.
Yeah, I, I think, as I mentioned before, Biden, President Biden's focus tomorrow night is, I believe, going to be on vaccine and testing. And there have been calls to, to access the Defense Production Act to increase the availability of testing. We'll have to wait and see what he does tomorrow night. One thing that I did not mention with regard, you know, you made the comment about the next few weeks being very significant. I, I think that's very accurate. And the good news coming out of South Africa today was that they're on the decline. So they've already crested in terms of the number of daily cases. And although it's hard to compare one demographic to another, and you have to be careful with, with comparing perhaps apples to oranges, that development suggests, and you heard it in Mayor de Blasio's comments today in New York City, that they expect a very quick spike and then a very quick retreat. And that very well may play out, not across the nation, but in areas that are hit hard. And for those of you who are unaware, much like the beginning of the pandemic, Omicron has hit the Northeast and specifically New York City harder than anywhere else. So it likely will play out like it did back at the beginning, where New York gets hit hard, experiences the hardship, and then declines.
Are we rethinking anything with our high-contact sports?
No, what we're doing is we're following the guidance as put forth by the Health Department. So the options with regard to high-risk sports, basically, continue to play or um, to high-risk sports, basically continue to play or to shut it down or to pause. Uh, and right now, um, it would seem to me to be inconsistent to have a policy for high-risk sports that's, that's different than what we're applying in the classroom. So, uh, as long as they, they wear the masks, high, the, the students who are vaccinated are not required to quarantine. Those students who are unvaccinated are required to quarantine. What's going to happen is either we have sufficient numbers of students to play the games uh, or we're in a position where we don't have sufficient numbers and we shut it down. Have contemplated other changes, but viewed it within the context of what I just said, I think the prudent thing to do right now is to just move forward. And the lens I'm applying to the pandemic to some extent, and it's largely based on the hospitalization rates and the belief, the hopeful belief that the vaccine will prevent severe disease, um, is that this is something that we're gonna have to learn to live with moving forward. Um, different iterations of this, this virus. And as long as you know, hospitalization and death are not part, a significant part of the equation and it's people getting sick, uh, but not severely sick, uh, then I think we need to do everything we can uh, to carry on, uh, with our normal activities.
Thanks, Jeff. Are there any other members of the public, um, that are, have joined us this evening that have a question for the, the board? Uh, or, or Mr. Nichols, now would be the time to ask it, because we had paused public input. And I'll also go back to the board members as well. Um, if there are any questions from board members, just wanted to open that up to the public as well. Anyone from the board while we're waiting for hands?
Jeff, I just want to make some, a couple of clarifications. So the school, um, each classroom is equipped with HEPA filters, correct?
Correct.
So, cause there was, there was some conversation or people thinking that we only had them in certain classrooms or certain areas, but I just want to publicly state that we do have them. We invested them last year and they are in all the buildings. And then the reason why the windows are open is because of, do you want to explain that?
Well, increased airflow. You know, decreases transmission of the virus. And we know that being indoors, uh, is not preferable, uh, and outdoors is better, but classes outside.
Right. So yeah, so there was just some, some conversation about, you know, um, windows are open because it's too hot or whatever, but actually we're encouraging staff and employees to keep windows open a little bit to keep the air circulating um, and fresh air. And so I just wanted to just put it out there that we're still continuing to do everything we can to fight the virus.
We are, but I think it's important to be very forthcoming with the public. And from my perspective, I think it's, you know, the, the community spread of Omicron is greater than Delta or any variant that preceded it. And I think it's highly likely that over the next few weeks, um, we're gonna see an increase in virus transmission. And what that increase is and how it plays out in the hospitalization rates will greatly influence what our path post-January third is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Sandy. On the other hand, Mr. Fisher, before we move on.
I'm not seeing any.
Any board questions before we move on?
Just one more follow-up, Jeff, if I may.
Sure.
How is the, the staffing been with the, the raise in, um, the number of test positive cases and even people that might just be home with symptoms that don't necessarily have it? Has that impacted how the district is operated? And do, obviously, you know, aside from hospitalization, that might be a mitigating factor in how we move forward as well. Just wondering if that was something that's been discussed or cause for concern at this point.
Yeah, it's a good question. Um, but we're in a different, um, an entirely different scenario. Uh, to the extent that the vaccinated uh, staff members are not required to quarantine if, if, if they come across someone with COVID. So last year, i- if we had one case, it, it would be feasible that we might have to quarantine five or six teachers who came in contact with that student. Given that our vaccination rate amongst our faculty and staff is well north of ninety percent, that puts us in good shape. With regard to your specific question, you know, how is, how are, how is staffing being impacted by people who don't necessarily have COVID, but have symptoms that require them to stay home until they provide proof of a negative test? Uh, there has not been a great impact, uh, on our staffing. Uh, thankfully, the number of people out, um, with, with uh, symptoms that are confirmed with COVID, who have not tested positive, um, or, or people who have symptoms but don't have COVID, the number of those people is pretty, um, pretty minimal at this point. Now, obviously, we don't know how it's going to play out moving forward, but at this point, we're in good shape.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And Jeff, I did see, um, just one other question uh, in the chat room. If, if we do move to remote, are the staff ready to make the move? And are they set up, um, as much as possible for, you know, for all courses and stuff in the event that, positivity rate dramatically increase and the end decision was made to do that?
Yeah, so what we're doing, um, proactively, uh, and again, I'm hopeful that we're gonna return to school January third and hospitalization will not go up. But we will be sending all of our students home with their computers over break, uh, knowing that the future conditions are sort of unknown at this point. And as per my previous comments, we'll assess the situation uh, as close to January third as possible, maybe around the first of the year, because we've got to give parents a couple of days' notice. Should things really deteriorate and we would have to move to remote? Um, but again, we're preparing for every, uh, contingency. Uh, and that's why the computers are going home. With regard to, uh, faculty members, um, familiarity and level of comfort with remote instruction, I would probably be misleading you if I were to say that they would jump in and be just as fluent as they were, you know, the last time we were in that situation. Um, but we will be, um, working with them to prepare them for that transition should it happen. Again, my hope is that it doesn't, but should it, we'll have the same professional development resources we had available um, in the past to make sure everybody's as comfortable with remote instruction as possible.
Great.
Hey Jeff, I, I just have one question because I missed part of the things. I had a bad internet connection. So if like staff member is like vaccinated and gets in close contact, just want to clarify again, do they have to quarantine or not?
So, so anybody in the school community, meaning staff, uh, students, uh, or faculty members who are vaccinated, uh, by that, by being vaccinated can't be classified as a close contact in this and thus are not required to quarantine. Okay.
But they have to get tested, you said, on the third day or fifth day? What's, no?
They don't have to. It's recommended.
Oh, it's recommended.
That if they were, if they had close contact or they, they, they ran across somebody who was infected for fifteen minutes or more over a twenty-four hour period, then it's recommended that they get a test between three and five days after their last point of contact with that infected person.
Okay, got it. Thank you so much.
Welcome.
I do have one more related question. You've been, you've been, uh, and the district's been really great with my, also monitoring the vaccination rate of our student population. Is there, you know, it's been a little while since we've talked about it. And obviously, the age group that was available to get vaccinated dropped a bit. I just, I don't need specific numbers. I don't, wouldn't expect you to have that off the top of your head, but I was, but you probably are getting it right now. I'm just curious if we're, how we're seeing, how is that trending for us? Um, you know, are we continuing to see a higher take rate of vaccination at the younger levels and at that middle of the high school level or?
Uh, bear with me for one sec.
Yeah.
We'll bring it up. So as of today, in grade six through twelve, I'll go through this uh, pretty quickly. Grade seven, and when I, when I refer to vaccination rate, I'm referring to two weeks after the second dose. So grade seven is seventy-one, grade eight sixty-two, grade nine sixty-eight, grade ten seventy-four, grade eleven seventy-one, grade twelve eighty-eight. So when you average all those out, it's about seventy percent for the high school. Um, and then for the elementary school, you would expect it to be less. And, uh, those numbers, uh, are uh, kindergarten, uh, forty-one percent have their first dose, thirteen percent have their second dose. First grade, sixty percent have their first dose, thirty-two percent have their second dose. Second grade, fifty-five and twenty-three, third grade, forty-eight and nineteen, fourth grade, sixty and twenty-eight, fifth grade, sixty-two and thirty-one. So the uptake at the elementary level, um, is, is less. But I try to focus on the, the the first number. So if I were to go from kindergarten through grade five, I'll do it really quickly. Forty-one, sixty, fifty-five, forty-eight, sixty, sixty-two. So I think, you know, we're in that fifty-five percent range on average. And we should shoot as a district to really get that north of seventy. Actually, we really should shoot to get north of ninety.
For elementary school, are those numbers additive? Like, are the kids that had two doses not in the pool of kids who had one dose? So it's like if it was forty-one percent and fifteen percent, we add them to get the total?
My understanding is that the, they're not added. But I will clarify that.
Yeah. Cause it is, I have to say, it is a little concerning that we have some grades in the middle high school that are still in the sixties. You know, low sixties because it's been a while now and those numbers, it doesn't sound like they've gone up a bit over the past month or two. So, um, you know, and that's discouraging. So I really hope that parents and families understand that the higher the vaccination rate, the healthier their families and community will be, and also the more likely that the school can remain open and teaching in person.
Yeah, I think, you know, unfortunately, Chris, a lot of those numbers are somewhat consistent with what we see, you know, nationally. Um, but you're right. And in the letter that we sent out today to parents, um, under mitigation measures, um, the first mitigation measure we listed in the letter was vaccination. So, you know, we can only do so much.
Yeah.
As I discussed, we, we can strongly recommend it, uh, but we can't require it.
Jeff, just a quick question. Do you think it might be useful to do another like vaccination clinic the way we did like for the elementary? Uh, a few weeks ago, after the holidays?
Yeah, I mean, we can talk to the hospital about that. And I thought that was a wonderful event and volunteer spirit in terms of the local physicians and nurses and hospital staff that came out, that was great. Um, so certainly we can look at that again. And I suspect, uh, moving forward, that if my comments about fully vaccinated meaning three doses uh, comes to fruition, then those clinics might not only be vaccination, but booster as well.
Thank you very much. Um, moving on to the principal's report.
Why don't we start with Mr. Malone?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Nichols, thanks for the, for all the update tonight. And, um, you know, as Jeff mentioned, at the elementary school, um, we're you know, we have been working to be prepared for, um, anything that we must face. Um, I think the children have done a great job of being up to speed with, whether it be Google Classroom or accessing some of the material via the, um, remote option. And parents have been very supportive with that throughout the year. So if we did have to make a switch, of course, there'll be challenges with that, but you know, I do believe we're, um, we're well-prepared for that. And I thank the staff for all their work thus far. At the elementary school, we closed out trimester one a couple of weeks ago and our um, report cards will be posted to the parent portal shortly. We're just reviewing things with Mr. Ann. And once, um, everything's complete, that will be posted and I'll let families know about that. Um, reminder that, and this is a district-wide safety drill. On Thursday, we have our, um, early release drill, a, um, state mandated practice that all school districts around the state must put in place to be prepared in the event that school needs to be closed early. At the learning center, we will close at two PM. So parents will pick up their children at two. And here at the elementary school, we'll begin dismissal at, um, a little after two oh five, um, with the goal of having everybody off for the holidays at two fifteen. And that will be this Thursday. And a reminder, there's no after-school activities on Thursday. And lastly, I, I do just want to send a big thank you out to everybody for the support of our service learning projects. We know that this time of year, there are many families, um, in our school community and in the larger community that are struggling. And, um, we had a successful food drive, our, um, the coat drive that, um, a couple of our Pearson students put together, the, um, Holly Girls, um, I thought they did a wonderful job bringing that back. It was very successful and those warm coats are being donated to the retreat. So thank you to all who supported that project. And lastly, our mitten line, um, we are providing some families in the community with some gifts and necessary items this year, as well as some, um, food for the holidays and that's being distributed as we speak. So just thank you to everyone for the support and generosity and I hope everyone has a safe and happy holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. You too.
Thank you.
So, good evening, everyone. Um, at the middle high school, we've been pretty busy. The high school fall play occurred. Um, the first, the second weekend in December, and it went well. The link to the performances, the three different sport performances are on the website. Um, sadly, last Sunday, we lost one of our teachers and we came together as a school. And I want to say kudos to our PPS staff, as well as our staff in general, supporting our kids as well as ourselves through the grieving process. We worked with the East End Hospice and I wanted to say a shout out to them because they did a really good job with working with us. Um, also, like Mr. Malone said, the service learning projects that we're doing at the middle high school with, um, the different, we do a giving gift card tree. Uh, our middle high school students like to pick their own gifts. We know how there are certain brands or certain things they want. So that was a phenomenal outreach this year compared to other years that we sold out of the giving gift card stuff that we needed. So we were able to go above and beyond for students in need or families in need that were asking for things. We were even able to donate a Christmas tree to a family in need. And now we are just winding up to winding down. So our teachers are hard at work to make sure if and when we have to transition to remote learning, that everything's set up on their Google classrooms. And we ended our progress report period. So at the middle high school, we work in four quarters. It is the end of the second progress report period for the second quarter. So we're halfway through. Those will be out for families later this week. And then the early release drill for us at the middle high school is at one thirty on Thursday.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Carriero. Any questions from the board for Mr. Malone or Ms. Carriero?
I just want to say that, um, I was at the, um, the, uh, fall play this year and as usual, it did not disappoint. So if you missed it, be sure to turn into YouTube because it was, it was done very well in a tough situation and the kids are just so resilient and it was amazing. So, kudos to them.
Great. Thank you. Any other board, uh, questions or comments on that? Okay. Let's move along to the school business administrator's report. Ms. Buscemi.
Yes, hi, everyone. So we have, uh, started working on the budget next year, the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. And, uh, we have our calendar that we are going to review tonight. So there will be a presentation at every meeting, um, after today, a budget development presentation. And, um, I think, okay, there we go. Start sharing. Um, just pull up the calendar.
You've got a lot of sharing tonight, Jennifer.
Yes. So there will be a presentation in every board meeting from now until the budget vote, which, um, is the day of budget vote for next year is May seventeenth. And, um, we're gonna start, um, on January tenth, we're gonna talk about salaries and benefits. So salaries and benefits make up the largest portion of our budget, almost eighty percent of our budget. So we want to start having that conversation very early on. Um, we will have some challenges this year, especially in the employee benefits area. We have a huge, um, increase in health insurance that we will have to absorb. Um, our health insurance rates are going up substantially, uh, for the twenty-two school year. And, um, we will talk about that at that meeting. Uh, January twenty-fourth, we're going to go through the, um, budgets for the Board of Education, central administration, debt service. We're going to talk about all the transfers to other funds. We're going to talk about all the transfers to other funds that we have each year, which is the transfer to the school lunch fund, transfer to special aid fund. We also may have a transfer to capital this year and we will go through our facilities budget that night. On February 7th, we will start talking about revenue projections. We do have revenue coming in from various sources other than our tax levy. So we'll, we'll start. Discussing the projections for revenue. We'll also start talking about our tax levy limit. We will go through our technology budget that evening and our transportation budget. On March 7th, we're going to be fine tuning our revenue projections all along and we will talk about any changes to those projections. We will at that point have our tax levy limit numbers available and we're going to talk about how that tax levy increase will impact the taxpayers in the school district based on current assessed values. Then we're going to go through the learning center budget, the elementary school budget and the middle and high school budgets. On March 21st, we will again talk about our revenue projections. We will be receiving information and updating information, that information all along. Our people personnel services budget will be discussed that night, which includes special education. Our athletics budget, our BOSI's budget, and then we will review the entire budget with the board and with everyone. We will also be making any changes to the salary and employee benefits budget along the way too, and we will be updating everyone. On April 11th, we're going to review the entire budget again and we plan to adopt our budget that evening. And also have the board adopt the property tax report card. We have a meeting slated for April 27th where we will have an entire budget review. And on May 9th, we will have our final budget review before the statewide budget vote on May 17. So does anyone have any questions? I know I went through that very quickly. The calendar will be on the website sometime tomorrow. And if anybody would like to suggest any changes to the calendar, they can also contact me and we can, we can update it for any changes.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer. Other board questions for Ms. Buscemi?
I, I have one and thank you so much. And I, I really welcome covering the, you know, the big part of the budget early in the first meeting. We haven't always done that. In some years, and I think that's really helpful because that's the majority of the budget. So it really allows a lot of reflection on that. Is it possible? And I know it's sometimes hard because the, the presentations are probably being put together and sometimes they don't get completed until right before meeting. But is it possible to include that as an attachment? For the public, because I think watching on the screen, sometimes some of the numbers get really small in the presentation you give. So if someone can open it up as an attachment, it may be easier for them to follow along.
Yeah, we will definitely try and do that. We are usually working with our numbers and crunching numbers right up until the board meeting. But we normally have a draft presentation available the Friday before. So there's no reason why we wouldn't be able to post a draft presentation or market draft. So that if there are any changes made to the presentation, we can address those during the board meeting.
That would be terrific. Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Any other board questions? Great. Thank you, Jennifer.
Welcome.
Nice to see somebody in the library. So that's lovely. So we appreciate that.
Yes, and happy holidays to all.
You, same to you. Moving on to our consent agenda, is there a motion for consent agenda item 7.2 through 7.13?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Again.
Any discussion? Great. Mary, if you can open up the voting, I'm going to vote aye, Mary. I wasn't able to log in on my laptop. So voting aye.
Okay.
Just waiting for your goes. Your goes?
You're muted, Yorgos.
Hey, sorry. I'm here.
I, I need your vote. On the consent agenda. Okay, thank you. That's unanimous.
Great. Section eight of tonight's meeting, the committee reports, policy committee. Is there anyone on the policy committee that wants to provide an update to the board and the public as to the happenings of that committee?
Yes. Good evening, Brian and board members, public.
Or you, Dr. Mears.
Good. So I'll be brief. I just wanted to let folks know that the board policy committee met on December 9th. We reviewed policy number 6160, which is professional growth and staff development. This policy is not actually required in our district manual and we had originally determined not to include it in our manual. But there was a policy pulse with updates. So the committee did review those updates to determine if we should, you know, reconsider admitting that policy into the manual. After review and discussion, we determined that the original decision would stand and we would not submit a 6160. We've also discussed the October policy pulse, which suggested revisions to policy number 1510. Which is the, you know, regular board meetings and rules, quorum, parliamentary procedures. I know that board members have already been discussing some of these. So the board will be consulted for their perspective on this policy and Yorgos was kind enough to volunteer to touch base with you and come back to the committee to report on your, your thoughts. Our, we are, we'll be reviewing policy pulse every, every month and we'll keep you updated. Our next meeting is January 13th. Happy holidays, folks.
Great. Thank you. You too. Any, any questions from board members for Dr. Mears?
So Brian, I, I just want to add up. So one of the tasks I had from the committee was to follow up with the board and see what policies the board needs the committee to review this year. So that's one task we need to come up with. And follow up, get back to the committee.
Sure. We can, we can do that.
Is there, is, is there any that are like? Like that are neon signs for us that we should be looking at or just in general, guys?
So we do have a list of like the policies. I mean, Dr. Mears, correct me if I'm wrong. That, you know, we were just going to start like reviewing, but like if there is any priority, so maybe what we can do is we can I can send to the board kind of the list of the policies that maybe we, we are planning to review this year and then we can see if there's any prioritization we need to do.
That'd be great. Thank you, Yorgos.
Thanks.
Yeah. And I can jump in too. We also, remember, we still have that draft policy manual. So most of the policies have already been really addressed through the, the new manual. We're just about moving forward with that completion. So if there's anything that comes up through any regulation updates or anything like that, we get those every month from everyone BOSI's and we'll keep you posted on those.
Great. Thanks.
Great. Hold on, lights went off here. One second. Okay. Sorry about that. Uh, thank you guys for that. Um, moving on to the items for discussion. Didn't schedule anything for discussion, but now it would be the opportunity for any board members. If they had any suggestions or wanted to see something at a future meeting, if you could let me know that now, that would be helpful in keeping track of, of everything. Is there anything that anyone had, any board members a question on or we need to schedule for a future meeting?
I just want to say, welcome to the new PE teacher who starts his tenure track with us tonight.
I just want to add that at the end, since we're coming to, this is our last meeting of 2021 and it's been not an easy year to be keeping schools open and productive. And I want to give a special shout out to administrators, faculty and all our staff. Who I think have done an exemplary job in working really hard to keep everybody healthy and educated and as positive as possible. You know, in a tough year, I, I'm really proud of what our district has done. So I want to thank you all.
Absolutely.
I'd just say, ditto to what Chris just said. Administration really done a fabulous job under very, very difficult circumstances. And are continuing to navigate this every day. So thank you.
Okay, great. Public input number two, if there was anyone here from the public that would like to ask a question of the board. Now would be the time to do that. Please raise your hand in the chat room or send a question. Jeff, I did receive an email question just while we've been on the meeting and the question was about potentially increasing the availability of hand washing stations, maybe inside and outside with respect to prevention. Not to put you on the spot, just a suggestion that maybe can be looked into.
Thank you, Brian.
Any board member questions or anything else before we move on to the last section of tonight's agenda? I see no hands, Scott. Am I correct?
I don't see any either.
Great. Okay, before we move to section 11, which will be a potential motion for executive session to discuss a collective bargaining unit negotiations and contracts. If that motion is to carry, the board would go into executive session to discuss that. At the conclusion of which, the board's sole action would be to come out of executive session and close the public hearing. No action would be taken by the board at that point. So for the public watching, this would be the end of the meeting. And no action aside from that would taken. So with that, is there a motion to convene into executive session to discuss the collective bargaining unit negotiations and contracts?
So moved.
Is there? Thank you, Sandy. Is there, is there a second?
I just want to ask, are we going with the first link? Cause we got two links for that. So do we go with the first one and the second one?
It should be the same.
It should be the same link. So try the second one for everybody.
One was a calendar invite, one was just copied.
All right, my bad. Sorry. Thanks.
No discussion on that. All in favor, same? I vote aye, Mary.
Okay.
I might do.
Thank you. And Alex?
Sorry, aye.
Thank you. That's unanimous.
Great.
Night, everyone.
Bye, Mary.
See everybody there.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.